I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask the city clerk to call a roll.
Mayor Sorel, here.
Assistant Mayor Hanson.
Yeah.
Councilor Grasso.
Here.
Councilor Lowndes.
Yeah.
Councilor Hein.
Yep.
Councilor Pandalakis.
Yes.
Councilor Whitehouse.
Yes.
Councilor Marconi.
Yes.
Councilor St. Martin. I'd like to ask everyone to bow their heads for a moment of silent prayer and then Councilor Pandalakis will lead us in the pledge of allegiance followed by God bless America.
I pray to thee.
The good life of the United States of America and the liberty of our people over this land, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America. Now we're down to a presentation and Ted Alex, President of the Portsmouth Rotary Club, their contribution will be given to us tonight for Pierce Island. Hmm, that's a big one, Ted.
I'd like to present this check to you. As President of the Portsmouth Rotary Club and on behalf of the Portsmouth Rotary Club, I'd like to present this check in the amount of $10,000 towards the City of Portsmouth Pierce Island Project. This check will help you reach your goal in making Pierce Island one of Portsmouth's true gems for all residents and visitors to enjoy.
Thank you so much. Let me get right on the camera. Okay.
You're very generous, too.
That's great.
Wonderful. Wish we had had a few more organizations out there that would come forward with $10,000 for the Pierce Island improvements, but that was really nice of you. Now we're down to the proclamation for Arbor Day, October 10th, 2003, and I'm going to ask the Assistant Mayor to read it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City Council, Chambers, City Hall, Portsmouth, New Hampshire. Whereas the City of Portsmouth has an extremely strong commitment to the physical beauty heritage of our community and whereas trees can reduce wind and water erosion of our precious topsoil, cutting, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen and provide habitats for wildlife and whereas the mayor has appointed a blue ribbon committee on trees and greenery, whereas in recent years the city has put a strong focus on street trees and the use of native species in public parks, public right of ways and several locations throughout our community. Now therefore I, Evelyn Sorel, Mayor of the City of Portsmouth, on behalf of the City Council do proclaim October 10th, 2003 as Ann Arbor Day in the City of Portsmouth and urge all citizens to recognize the importance of our trees and woodlands and to support efforts to care for them. Given my hand and seal on the sixth day of October 2003, Evelyn Sorel, Mayor of Portsmouth.
Is there anyone sitting out in the audience that is here to be giving this proclamation? If not, I'm going to give it to Councilor Joanne Grasso, who is very involved with Arbor Day. She'll make sure it goes in the proper direction. Thank you, Your Honor. Now we're down to the acceptance of the minutes.
So move, Your Honor.
Second.
All right. I'd just like to say for September 22nd, 2003. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Now we're down to the public comment session. I don't think I have to remind each one that it is just strictly three minutes and when Kathleen holds up the sign, I ask that you all sit down. We only have three speakers though tonight. The first one is James Horgan, Larry Field and minor league baseball.
Madam Mayor, City Councilors, I spoke before you all in a meeting in July about this subject and at that and this was in regard to rumors that were appearing in the local sports sections, the newspapers, well, minor league franchise at Larry Field. At that time I was assured that these proposals come and go all the time and I really shouldn't be too concerned about it and there would indeed be public hearings if something became serious. Well, I'm back three months later. Last week in the local newspapers, it was announced that the people who were pushing the idea in July have now purchased a franchise for $50,000 and it will be located in Larry Field. And it was also announced on Channel 9 Television by Charlie Sherman himself. So I come back to you again with my, you know, the general concern that should a city recreational facility be converted to an entertainment venue for a private company? I think there's a very general, serious issue there which deserves a public airing somehow. And of course I have the specific concerns as a resident of this neighborhood about parking, you know, where in the world are we going to provide parking, traffic noise, lighting at night, advertising and the scenic landscape itself. I'd rather be proactive than reactive on this because I assume that the public relations blitz has already started if, and I'd hate to be responding in a fashion that would make it appear as though I oppose the baseball, which a couple of members of the audience who saw me speak on TV three months ago accused me of. I wish I was sure then that it couldn't be further from the truth. I've played baseball most of my life. I was finally told by my doctor to stop at age 65, so, but I love baseball, but I think a recreational facility owned by the city should be available to citizens of the city first and foremost. So again, I would ask somehow, I don't know what process can be used here, but that the neighborhood be involved now, not later, and so that our concerns and our desires for what might happen to this facility can be stated upfront. Thank you.
Mr. Horgan?
Yes.
Our city manager would like to speak to the issue.
I appreciate your concern, Mr. Horgan. The, there is no official proposal before us. In fact, I, first time I had read that article and actually Councilor Whitehouse brought it to my attention, I did contact one of the individuals and I told them that they have a long way to go. There's no official proposal before the city. In fact, I was told they haven't purchased that team.
We understand why I'm concerned.
Oh, absolutely, and I agree with you 100%. There should be a public hearing. It is a policy decision that the City Council will have to make in conjunction with the land use agencies. This city, I mean, for something of that nature would have to come and there would be a public hearing and a public discussion and would have the neighborhoods involved and they would have to make their case to the city as to how they can make it work. I believe that at some point there will be a proposal sent to the city and what it is, it will immediately go to the City Council and there'll be public discussions on this. They may buy the team and find another place to put it in Larry Field or they may suggest Larry Field. I don't know because I have no proposal. But I will tell you that when I do get a formal proposal from them, then it will come to the City Council and we'll have a full public hearing and I agree with you 100%.
Yeah, the other thing I'd like to suggest is somehow the neighborhood be involved in the process. Our Neighborhood Association is dormant currently unfortunately, so I think something ad hoc would have to be created.
And we would include them. Until then, you know, we would just be sitting around talking about something we don't have any proposal on.
Okay, but I get nervous when.
I agree with you.
When it's announced on television.
Now, a lot of things are announced on television.
Well, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Horgan. Mrs. Jackson is the next one up and she's going to speak about the Seacoast African-American Cultural Center. And if you people haven't taken the time to go down there, it certainly is beautiful.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. Exactly one year ago today, October 6th, 2002, the community celebrated the opening of the Seacoast African-American Cultural Center in Portsmouth. It was a glorious occasion. Over 300 people attended and Madam Mayor honored us by presiding over the ribbon cutting ceremony. Since that time, over 500 people have visited the Cultural Center, some from as far away as China and Baghdad, Iraq, and they have enjoyed the many exhibits and programs we have presented. Our events have included art and other kinds of exhibits, poetry readings, lectures, music and slide presentations and involved local adults and children, students from the University of New Hampshire and varied experts from around the New England region. The mission of the Seacoast African-American Cultural Center is to celebrate the lives and achievements of black people with emphasis on the unique story of African-Americans in the seacoast and to infuse young people with an appreciation of their culture. We are extremely proud of our accomplishments. I am Vernis Miller Jackson, Chair of the Board of Directors of the Seacoast African-American Cultural Center and on their behalf, I thank you for your support in the past and ask for your continued support. Please join us on October 19th at 3 o'clock PM for festivities celebrating our first anniversary. Details of the event are included in the newsletter, which I have provided for you. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Vernis. And it certainly is beautiful and I think each councilor got the newsletter. Okay, very good. Thank you so very, very much. I hope maybe I can just be a better visitor, but so many things are going on at City Hall. It's been hard. The next and last speaker is Richard Smith, Rotary Contribution.
Good evening, City Council. City Manager John Manko. It's my pleasure tonight to be here and thank the Rotary Club of Portsmouth for their generous donation to the Pierce Island Project. And I want to thank them very much for their several years of commitment to Pierce Island and helping the City of Portsmouth, making this a great place to visit and I encourage all of us to visit Pierce Island frequently and it's a real pleasure again to thank Ted Alex who led the charge to make this happen this year and the entire Rotary Club. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Richard. That ends the public comment session. We are down to the public hearing. Ordinance amending, Chapter 7, Article 2, Section 7, Period 1100, speed limits by the addition of Simmons Street, Suzanne Drive and Wallace Road at 20 miles per hour. What's the matter, Alex? Oh, sorry. Now, who would like to speak to this? Alex? John? Who?
I think this is an American problem.
All right, Alex.
Madam Mayor, as you know, with the speed limits, if they're not posted, revert back to the state 35 miles an hour if they're not posted otherwise and these streets are very, very residential. We did miss one, as I mentioned to you earlier, Mayor, and we'll be adding Leslie Drive to this list after the public hearing. But it's a very condensed residential. I'm not sure that a better way in the future is whether we give the police chief the authority to post these. We just got, John Burke and I were just talking, there's just so many small neighborhoods that going 35 is unreasonable, but if they're not posted, the police department has trouble giving speeding tickets, so until that process changes, we'll be bringing these ordinances to you.
Very good. Thank you, Alex. Now I'm going to open up the public hearing. For any first time speakers, please come forward to the podium.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This is Martin Cameron, President of the Ocean Road Maple Haven Association. I first presented this ordinance, this proposal to the traffic and safety when I did learn that the streets, that there was only one sign posted and that was on Winchester and that was put up there, I think, when the construction project was underway in the new Maple Haven area and has been brought up by Assistant Mayor Alec Hanson. Without posting, it's authorized to go up to 35 miles an hour, which is really a ridiculously high speed in a congested area like that. I just want to say I'm here because I brought up the proposal and I want to endorse the proposal and I think the council will see, will see that the postings have to be there just to go ahead and help the situation and if a few signs, eight signs or whatever it takes prevents one accident, an injury or so forth, it'll all be worth it and I thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. Was still a first time around, do I have any other speakers? I'm going to second time around, do I have any speakers? Please come forward. Third and final time before I close the public hearing, do I have any speakers? Close. We're down to the approval of grants and donations. New Hampshire State Council on the Arts Grant for $2,000 for the creation of arts. What is your wish?
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilor Grasso.
I move that we accept the $2,000 grant awarded to the city from the State of New Hampshire for the New Hampshire Council on the Arts.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Harold, I'm sorry, did you have something to say?
Well, I just, again, being in the communication, they want us to send a thank you letter to certain key people in government.
Will you do that? We're down to the Portsmouth Rotary Club donation for $10,000 for Pierce Island. Who would like to make that motion? Brett?
Yeah, I move to accept the very generous $10,000 donation to the city from the Portsmouth Rotary Club.
Second. Discussion? I'm quite sure, Alex, everybody's happy about that one. Oh, I can't, yes. I, is, there any discussion from the councilor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Police honor guard donation from Mr. and Mrs. John Rogers, neighbors of mine, for $50.
Move to approve and accept the $50 donation awarded to the Portsmouth Police Department from Mr. and Mrs. John Rogers.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Considerations of resolutions and ordinances. First reading of ordinance amending, Chapter 7, Article 3, Section 7, Period 336, one way straight. What's your wish?
Your Honor?
Yes?
Move to pass first reading of the amended ordinance as submitted and schedule a public hearing and second reading at the October 20th meeting.
Very good. Did I get a second? Discussion by anyone? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Second reading of ordinance amending, Chapter 7, Article 11, Section 7, Period 1100, speed limits by the addition of Simmons Road, Suzanne Drive and Wallace Road, 20 miles per hour. Did you want to add the Leslie in that one?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I wish to amend.
Leslie Drive, yeah.
I amend the motion to add Leslie Drive.
Very good.
So the motion would be moved to pass second reading as amended including Leslie Drive in whole third and final reading, October 20th, City Council meeting.
Okay. Did I get a second?
Yeah, I seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Now we're down to third and final reading of ordinance amending, Chapter 7, Article 3, Section 7, Period 330, no parking, cartridge streets, both sides, the entire length of the streets. Councilor?
Move third and final reading.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. I'll let you have the next one, Harold.
Doesn't make a difference, does it?
You're very quiet down there tonight. Third and final reading of ordinance amending, Chapter 7, Article 9, Section 7, Period 901, penalties. Harold?
Yes, move to pass third and final reading of the amended ordinance as submitted.
Second. Discussion? Yes, Councilor Whitehouse.
Yes, I am kind of concerned about where in the ordinance are, is there another ordinance that gives the figure that shows how many feet from a intersection is a penalty? Now it talks about, yeah, parking. It talks about 15 feet from the fire station and then it talks about parking in a driveway, parking to obstruct activity and double parking, parking too close to a curb, but it never gives the number of feet that's, if you're within, that's a violation, the number of feet from a curb. Madam Mayor?
Well, I'm not going to quote how I remember it.
From a corner.
It's been a long time since I was on the auxiliary.
That's what I'm curious about. How many feet from a corner is a violation?
Okay. Evelyn?
No, I think the Assistant Mayor probably can answer that.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, our Parking and Transportation Director is here and I'll let him give.
Can you?
Most of those are posted. No parking here to the corner. In the vision, if the line of sight requires a longer distance, we've extended them.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Actually, the distance is governed by state law and therefore doesn't have to be in the local and it's just 20 feet.
From any corner.
Right.
Okay, I see. Unless posted otherwise.
Unless posted otherwise.
All right. Go ahead.
All right, you are ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Presentation and considerations of written communications and petitions. The first one is a letter from David Morehouse regarding a loss of Coast bus stops in front of Woodbury Manor.
Yes, Councilor Pandalakis. Madam Mayor, I'd make a motion to refer this to the city manager with a report back if it's good.
Second.
Your Honor?
Yes.
And then I.
Councilor Grasso.
I'm sorry, did you want to speak?
Yeah, I'd just like.
Did I get a second?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd just like to ask a question. It seems as though since the second time around with the coast, there's been a lot of drops of places where they used to stop and they don't now, one of them being the hospital. And I'd just like to get a clarification on that, is the city involved in this or is it just coast to separate entities?
Let me, let me, in fact, I would probably want to do this in my report back, but I will give you a brief overview. The city has redefined, working with Coast, many of the bus routes and that is because of the ridership issues that we experienced and there were some studies done and there were public hearings, multiple public hearings that were done relative to the change in routes. And I believe we, they have some information that has been provided to the City Council. The route changes were, like I said, were done in conjunction with Coast and have resulted in probably doubling our ridership as a result of some of those changes. What I would probably suggest, when I give you my report back, it probably would be useful for the City Council to have a work session on this so that you get a full understanding of the amount of work that went into the reconfiguration of these routes. It was not done overnight. In fact, John spent a lot of time with the Coast staff and also the PDA staff because we are partners with the PTA Development Authority in this. In fact, they had to give up some routes too. So what we did is we reconfigured and I'd rather spend the time and bring out the boards and show you what the old routes were, what the new routes are, why we don't stop at certain places and give you reasons why we don't do that rather than trying to give you a tuna to the answer tonight, Council, because I think you have some good questions. Unfortunately, sometimes when we have these multiple public hearings, people don't realize that they affect them until actually the day that they don't catch the bus at that location. So I think it'd be useful and I'll come back for the next meeting and I'll probably recommend a work session on this because I think you all would want to know how we approached it.
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilor Grasso.
I don't know if this would help the people who are concerned about the loss of the stop, but by calling the Portsmouth Senior Center, they can request a van, particularly if they need the van ride, they need to go to the hospital or to a doctor's appointment and it's 431-8677. They need to call at least the day ahead, but the senior van, which the city does subsidize, will be able to take them to medical appointments if that's a concern.
Councilor Grasso, I did tell David Morehouse that exact thing, but he said no. It was very satisfying to have Coast stop right out there because they went every place but where they should be going, you know, grocery shop in downtown here and every place. And so when they took that off, it changed. And, uh, so when they took that off, it changed everything for all of those people in Manor Drive. Uh, yes, Councilor?
Madam Mayor, I could ask the City Manager, who reports back to us, uh, there's ten people who have signed this, so it seems to be a big concern in that neighborhood. Um, if you could tell us whether or not Coast drives by there anymore? Uh, I'm not sure if they don't take a left down Denet now and it's just short, but I, I know they used to, so. I mean, if you could include that in your report.
Sure, I mean, we can answer it tonight, John. Again, not to get into the specifics, uh, I know it's going to be in the report back. Uh, we currently go right down Islington. If the Coast service goes down Islington Street, goes into Pick and Pay, and then continues.
No, this is Woodbury. So, are we still going up by the Holiday Inn?
No, that was the service changed in, in June. They weren't getting any ridership up there, so they went straight down Islington now.
From, how do they get to, how do they get to Islington, though?
Coming from Market Square, they go right down Islington Street.
Okay.
Continue all the way to Islington to Greenland Road to get to the transportation. Uh, they used to go Islington Street, take a right on Bartlett Street, left on Thor, uh, left on, uh, on Denet, come back on Woodbury, Globe Cottage, across the bypass, over Bartlett to get to the transport. And the time was extremely long, and they weren't getting any ridership, in large part because the Housing Authority was providing a lot of that service already. Thank you.
The bus driver told Mr. Morehouse that, uh, the reason why they stopped it was because the bus had a hard time getting onto Bartlett and turning there. That was his excuse. But, uh, I, I do hope we look into it because there is.
My suggestion, I guess, is because we did revamp all those routes, I think it'd probably be useful for the City Council to spend a half hour, an hour, understanding exactly what was changed, and, and it really is amazing to see the increase in ridership.
What about the trolley? That goes by there, right? The trolley service goes by there?
Well, that is the trolley service, so.
No, I mean, the other trolley. Does that still go by there?
Which other trolley?
Paul's?
No, I don't think so. Paul?
No. Paul Reardon?
No.
No?
Okay.
All right, very good. Um, so, yeah. My secretary is telling me to move the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Keeping me on my toes tonight. Um, a letter from Ted Alex, President of the Portsmouth Rotary Club, requesting permission to place a sign on Middle Road across from the plain Little League Field. What is your wish, Councilor? Uh, Councilor Whitehouse?
Yes, Your Honor, I move that we approve the Portsmouth Rotary Club's request for placement of their sign.
Uh, discussion?
Uh, I'm sorry, I didn't know if you had.
Um, Councilor, uh, Allen?
Yeah, I think this sign's going to block out some of the campaign signs that normally go.
Didn't there used to be one there?
No.
No?
I don't believe so.
Oh, gosh, I always thought there was.
I think it was the other sign, the other one.
The one that was, yeah. Do you know, Ted? Was there ever a Rotary sign there?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I'm talking years ago now. Yeah. All right, we all ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Excuse me, Ted, if you can give me a call in the morning, I'd probably rather have the Public Works Department work with you on that installation.
Thank you again, Ted, and thanks to Rotary Club. Uh, we're down to the City Manager, and the City Manager has two items that require action.
Your Honor, uh, the, uh, the first item needs some more discussion with the city negotiators, so I'm going to, uh, proceed right to, uh, the report back regarding a request for separate water meters for lawn usage. As you recall, at derogate eighteenth meeting, there was a request from Diane Vera, President of Walker House Condominium Association, that the City Council reconsidered the ordinance prohibiting condominium owners from having separate water meters for lawn usage. I provided the City Council with a memorandum from both David Allen, Deputy Director of Public Works, and Gail Cunningham, the Enterprise Fund Accountant, in response to this request. As you'll know from the memo, uh, the Public Works and Finance Department do not recommend amending the ordinance to include, uh, multifamily units. And, uh, what we'll be suggesting is, uh, that you accept the recommendation of Public Works and Finance Department and place this matter on file. Uh, Dave is here tonight along with Gail, if you have any questions about the report.
Could I ask that that memo be sent to those people?
Absolutely.
Your Honor, I move that we, we accept the recommendations of the Public Works and Finance Department and that this memo be placed on file.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That is it.
That's it, Your Honor, other than the, um, informational items that I have provided you, uh, in your packet, um, and in addition, uh, there will be also a, uh, a dedication or at least a, um, an open house relative to the Sagamore Creek property this weekend on Saturday, and I believe the council members have received that notification.
Very good. All right, then, we're down to the mayor. I can see everybody wants out of here for the game. Okay. Um, consideration for taxi commission, uh, Frank Gaget. And I want you councilors to look down to the bottom of the page and see just what kind of a taxi commission you have. There were twelve meetings and he missed none. Another consideration for the taxi commission, James Beely. And he, there's another one. Twelve meetings and has missed none. Then, um, I'll pass my gavel probably to Alec.
Assistant Mayor has the chair and recognizes the mayor.
Quite nicely, Jim Shanley, and I know everyone knows Jim, walked into my office and gave me a check for five hundred dollars for the cemetery improvement fund, and I would like to make a motion to accept that money.
Second.
A, a nice letter has been sent out to Audrey and to everybody's concerns.
Okay, you have a motion, you have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And Madam Mayor, you're gonna, you already got the thank you letter right hooked on there?
Yes, it's hooked right on to it. I'm very efficient lately.
You already cashed the check, huh? All right.
Uh, you might as well hold it because I've got, uh, another check that we received , uh, from the town of Newcastle for our Coalition of Communities Fund for a thousand dollars.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Is that the first check from the council? No. They've been a constant supporter, wonderful coalition.
Newcastle has provided in the past.
As would, as would be expected, thank you.
And, uh, just so the council knows, we have total donations of eight hundred and four thousand dollars from various entities.
Did you get that eight hundred and four thousand dollars from other communities?
Mm-hmm. Well, including.
Including Portsmouth.
Yeah. We're still very active, and we're still going to repeal the statewide property tax.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, at.
You want your gavel back?
Uh, yeah, because I'm all done. At this point, I'd like Kelly to make an announcement.
Thank you, Mayor. I just would like everybody to know that the absentee ballots for the upcoming municipal election on November fourth are available in my office. Our hours on Monday through Friday, eight-thirty to five. If you would like an application, you can call the office, we'll be happy to mail one out to you, or you can physically come into the office, fill out an application, and receive your ballot at that time.
Thank you, Kelly. We're down to, you're welcome. We're down to Councilor Heim.
Your Honor, I think it's very important that this letter from Mr. Shanley in reference to the walk he took through our cemeteries, I think the letter should be read.
That's old business. We already did that three.
It's eleven B two, but the letter should be read.
Let me read it.
Has a lot of concern.
John's going to read it for me. He found it right on.
Dear Mayor, Greg Whalen, who walks his dog through the North Cemetery, gave me an excellent tour yesterday. It is a deplorable situation. I see so many New Hampshire cemeteries cared for with pride. Hopefully, a committee can lay out a plan with the city of Portsmouth interested citizens working together. In closing, checking, I'm glad you are running again. Wish us all, uh, wish us all good health in.
Oh, four.
Oh, four. Jim Shanley.
And I would just like to say that I spoke to Jim about our new, uh, new. Cemetery Committee. Committee, and also Greg Whalen came in, and I had a chance to tell him about it. So, they, uh, they're well versed on that.
It was in the papers, Your Honor.
I know it. They've done, you know, they haven't been phoned that long, but they've been doing very good.
They're very, very busy.
Wonderful job, just wonderful. Uh, now, we're down to Councilor Heim, Veterans Exemption for Property Tax.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, acting on a Senate Bill forty-five amendment, which now allows the cities to adopt an amount of the optional veterans' tax on property, an increase from fifty-one dollars to five hundred dollars, uh, or any amount between those two numbers. Currently, we are allowing a hundred dollars a year. Due to the fact that we do not have adequate information on the impact of this approval, I'm asking that we refer to the City Manager for a report back on October twentieth, at which time the council hopefully will vote, uh, their approval.
Second.
Discussion? Being no discussion, you are ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Very good, John. Uh, miscellaneous and unfinished business.
Yes, Your Honor.
Red Sox are playing tonight, so let's get with it.
Oh, thank you. Some time ago, I, I, um, made a motion and the council agreed that we would have a, a report from the, uh, recycling, um, foreman in December, and I'm now requesting that we put, postpone that to March so that the, um, Public Works will have a complete year to, uh, get their facts and figures together and also have some input as to the program that's been implemented, um, for a few months down, at, uh, down, in the downtown. So, at this time, I'd like to, um, uh, suggest that we have our recycling review scheduled in March.
Good.
I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Yeah, I'll change that.
Thank you.
All right, any other unfinished business? Harold?
Your Honor, I move, we adjourn.
Ooh.
Ooh.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Great. Thank you very much, everyone.